Good morning, welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today is a special session of Commissioners Court. It's August the first, two thousand sixteen, and it's nine o'clock. All members of the court are present constituting a quorum and the meeting is called. Everyone will please rise for the invocation and Commissioner Pelt would you please deliver?
I then follow we thank you for being blessed with this life. We thank you for the opportunity to come here and to serve the citizens of Hardin County. Pray you give us the wisdom and the guidance that we need. Pray that you would be with our men and women in uniform and watch over them. Pray you'd be with our law enforcements across the nation during this difficult time. Pray you'd be with our nation during this coming election. That your will would be done. Forgive us our sins, we ask in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Item number three, Commissioner Ken Pelt, acceptance of Hardin County Emergency Services District Number One. Auto de financial statement for the year ending September thirtieth, twenty fifteen.
Salute.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Just like to add that Angela did review that report, is that correct? And everything's in order?
Yes, sir.
That's for Coons.
Right. Number four, discussion and possible action regarding transfer of one thousand one hundred and two dollars from professional fees. Account number zero one zero four oh one four hundred to land purchase, account number zero one zero four oh one five hundred. For closing cost of property to be purchased from Patricia Hayes Donaldson, making the total purchase price fifty one thousand one hundred and two dollars. Property being purchased as described as follows, lots fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, block ten. Of the original town of Coons as recorded in volume one, page two twelve, plat of records of Hardin County, Texas. This purchase was approved in Commissioners Court on June twenty seventh, twenty sixteen.
Salute.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? I'd just like to add that on behalf of Commissioners Court that we really appreciate the work that Jimmy McCam did for us on this project. And this is the land adjacent to the property where the new annex building is going. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, discussion and possible action to amend collection improvement program and human resource budgets as follows. Three thousand three hundred and forty seven dollars from salaries part-time in the collections improvement program. To salaries and fringes in the human resources department.
Salute.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is budget workshop to review and discuss the proposed fiscal year seventeen budgets submitted by the following departments. The first is gonna be the county clerk and we should have a copy of her budget request. Now, this is a department that we had on a budget workshop previously. She has no increase in the operations expenses, but there was a request for a, an increase in, in three of her employees' salaries. And that was using the money that was left over from one of her retirees and splitting that among three other employees. As it's written on your, on your budget proposal here. And we decided to table this and bring it back up after we had our certified appraisal values from the appraisal district. So that's why this is on today's. And Ms. Glenda, would you like to speak regarding your request?
Yeah, when Pat retired in December, she was making sixteen twelve an hour. And so when we did hire someone, they come in at thirteen sixteen. And I did not move anyone up to in Pat's place to make that sixteen twelve. So I was just asking for tho- that difference in that money. If it could be given to my three employees that's been there longest.
And each of those employees, didn't they get a step increase last year? One of them got a two-step and the other two got a one-step increase?
Yeah. This would only be like ninety-eight cents each that they, they would get.
The additional funds have been removed from the proposed budget, so it would be an increase.
They would have to add it back into her budget because this is, this person came in making what a new person should make.
Yeah.
Leaving that money to go back into the general fund, which is what normally does happen.
And that money's been in there this whole, this whole year too.
Right.
Right, but it was taken out from the proposed.
Yeah, I had asked for it though then, when she retired. So.
What were the difference thing? And we can't vote today, but we can come to a consensus on this. That way we know whether or not to add this back in as a, as an increase for the final budget. Or whether or not we leave it like it is in the proposed budget. I would be for leaving it like it is in the proposed budget.
How many dollars are we talking about this?
Do you know what the total amount would be?
I have not calculated.
It's three dollars an hour over two thousand and eighty hours is the way we would figure that, is that right?
And plus your.
And then plus the fringes that would be increased as well.
Why wouldn't the fringes be increased? They're already in there.
Because if you increase the hourly rate and those, those go up by percentage as well. Just for instance, our retirement is fourteen oh five percent, so if you add a dollar an hour, then that percentage goes up. The percentage doesn't, but the amount goes up by that one dollar times fourteen oh five.
Three, three dollars an hour times twenty eighty hours is six thousand two hundred and forty dollars. And then plus your benefits.
So you think it'd be around seven thousand or can you, can you say?
Yes, sir. I would say approximately seven thousand, just a rough estimate.
All right, I stand on my previous comment that I'm for leaving it like it is in the proposed budget and against the increase.
I'm, I'm for the increase if her bottom line is no greater than last year.
My question would be in line of employees with the same service years, where are they at? So if you take a clerk in one office and a clerk in another office, they've both been here. Like how long has Connie been here?
Connie's been here twelve years, Regina's been eight, and Nan's been here fifteen. And all the other ones have been here probably less than a year.
Yeah, so I would like to see, is it in line with another clerk that's been here twelve years?
See, I don't think that we have anybody to compare to. The, I mean, the person with the like duties would be in the district clerk's office. And I don't know, other than her chief deputy, I think everybody else is fairly new. There may be some other clerks that have similar duties, I'm not real sure, but those are, those are apples for apples, we're just from the county clerk employees.
I would say the reason that I'm gonna say I am for this is because we've allowed this in the past with other departments.
Is Connie your chief deputy?
Yes, mhm.
Are you adding, you're adding basically ninety-five cents on to each of the, each of the three?
Mhm, ninety.
Is that in the, is that in our steps? Is that, would that be a close to the steps?
I'm not really sure.
Probably about two steps, because I think it's about fifty cents a step.
What I'm saying is their, their pay gonna be on the step. You know, you understand what I'm saying, there's a ladder. It's gonna be on that step ladder. I would, I would be for it also.
Y'all excuse me, I'll bring a, a pay scale.
I, I got a question about the steps. Are we following steps?
If we give someone a, a, a raise like this outside of the three percent, that's what we've been using since I've been on the court?
Long time ago, we quit using step altogether.
I think you just give us a matrix.
Well, I, I mean, I can understand that, but we either have a step or we don't have a step, one of the two, you know, it can't be both ways. And we didn't have, we cut the step out when we didn't have funds to meet the budget here some years ago.
And when you mentioned that last year, I talked to Rose, she was still here at that time, and she said, we've been following it since then. But we just, there was one or two years we didn't give any step increases.
Well, then if we're gonna follow step, then we're gonna give raises when this, when they become eligible on the step, is that right?
On the, I think we're talking about two different things unless I'm confused, Mr. Pelt. On the pace, on, on the pay scale that Ms. Debbie has in HR. There's different steps that go through there, but there's nothing specifically that specifies when you'll be eligible to move up. It's just if you do move up.
It's just used as a base and then your two percent or three percent is calculated off your salary. And then every so often, they, they increase their step.
Well, I go back to the premise I was hearing, we set this stuff up. And we were following step. If you reach that step on your, by age or whatever, then you got a raise. But I say, I, I didn't know we was following step.
I don't think it's been followed like you just mentioned. Everybody's on a step, because I can tell you what each one of your employees is on.
What does it mean then?
It's just, they just periodically increase their level, but then everybody gets a, a percentage based on their salary.
Like I moved one of my operators a couple of years ago from being maxed out at a light equipment operator.
Mhm.
Hi.
To going into a heavy equipment operator, so you gotta have a starting pay on heavy equipment. That's, that's what I used, that's the matrix.
See, all my other ladies.
Top down light equipment.
Everybody else.
And then he's moved over to heavy equipment, first grade. And so, but he hasn't gotten a step since then, other than the three percent or two percent that we've given. But it gave us a matrix of defining what would be a heavy equipment.
And that's what we used last year whenever Ms. Austin asked for the increase for these three personnel, was we use the, use the step program to, to classify those people?
Well, I think that's the answer, David. I think this court needs to decide, are we going to follow the step program we have, or are we not gonna follow it?
I would agree with, with Mr. Pelt on that too. As far as I know, the only department that goes step raises is the sheriff's department. But as I said a while ago, the guideline that Ms. Debbie has in HR. It doesn't specify when you're eligible to get a step raise, it just in case you do, there's a guideline for the no, the monetary numbers that we would use. Yeah, and I think with the budget being fluid, I support that, that if you have a person you move up. You know, that, that you don't have to sale pay every five years, you get a step plus the percentages, just if you have someone. On merit.
And that's the way it's been done since at least the last, the last year and this year. When a request came in, they use the step scale to make a, a request for one or two employees. And when somebody's hired in new, we use that, that to, to base their salary off of. But you're right, it does need to be clarified.
Yeah, it needs to be clarified, so that if it's gonna be automatic, well then, and I'm not for an automatic system. But I'm a merit person. But if it's gonna be automatic, we'll use it, that's the way.
I agree. Yeah, and I think we keep it and then do it on merit.
Yeah, okay.
Is there any more discussion on the county clerk's?
What about on the printing, Judge?
Ma'am.
We have four thousand on printing, but remember we went up on our dates of, of trial dockets? And we were having to buy more of the, of the cards.
Right.
A lot more, so.
Well, I've got the year-to-date expenditures, or I guess I don't have that. Do you have that?
I have one, but it's.
It's through June.
Did you like it or you don't mean that's.
Do you mind telling us what year-to-date is on printing? It's four thirty-five.
Five thousand ninety dollars, so she's over sixteen fifty-nine.
And we just ordered more cards the other day.
Is that encumbered?
No, there's five hundred and sixty-nine dollars encumbered, yes, sir.
So that's included in the total you gave with five thousand?
That's, that's correct.
We're used to, we would have it maybe once a month, we're having a pretty often.
Right.
Trial dockets. Sometime we wouldn't even have one for the.
That line owns over one thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Do you see another one that's under that, that'll cover it?
Mhm, yeah.
So we can make an adjustment by the end of the year and then use that for our basis next year?
Yes, she can reduce her equipment expense. She still has five thousand four hundred and ninety dollars in equipment expense. She's only spent two hundred and ten dollars this year.
And we did move that copy of this in the courtroom, we moved that to the jury of crimes, so that won't come out of your budget. And it won't come out of the county attorney's budget either.
What did you say the five thousand was what?
Equipment expense. You've only spent two hundred and ten dollars. Five thousand seven hundred was budgeted, so you have five thousand four hundred and ninety dollars left in that line on them.
Okay, but it's not to order a couple of computers too, so that.
Did we come to a consensus on the step increases for the three employees?
I think Alan.
I agree.
And others agree.
Okay, then that's, that'll get added in. All right, and next we have item B, the district clerk's office. We have a similar request here. We have an employee that left that was making a certain amount. And Ms. Hogg, if you'd like to speak to that on, on the addition, and you also have a request to increase a part-time employee to full-time.
Yes, as you recall, the first year I did without the full-time employee. So we could afford the scanners, because the scanners that we had were not working. I reduced it last year to part-time. I filled the position. And we started, we've started scanning documents. That's not all she does, that's her primary job though. And I'd like to pick up the pace on the scanning, we're out of space. I don't know where you plan on me moving all that once the annex built, since there's no storage in that location. So I would like to ask that she be, that it would go back to full-time position to help with that. And then I had asked for a seventy-four cent per hour increase on two deputies. These deputies are doing not only civil but criminal now. And I don't wanna lose them, they're very hard workers. And I'd hate to know that, that I had to train a couple more. But these, these are working well, they, they don't wanna leave, they work through lunch and break, they don't want in complaint. And most of you know criminals a little bit different than dealing with civil all day long. So I think they deserve the seventy-four cent per hour raise.
And that's two people at seventy-four cents each, or?
Yes, two deputies going, it would, if you looked at this year's.
It's the two in the middle on your second page where it says deputy step two, and then deputy step two?
That's correct.
Okay, and they're going from a step one or a step zero?
Um, I think thirteen sixteen is a step zero, so they're going to a step two.
They're going from a, a, a step zero to a step two?
Yeah, with the seventy-four cents.
Are you moving money to cover that, or you're asking for moving money?
If I figured it correctly, of course Debbie probably would have to do the FICA and all that. If I look at last year's salary budget, it's about eight hundred dollars shy.
About eight hundred dollars between last year's salaries and this year's salaries?
On the hourly, I don't know if Debbie's done a, a breakdown on it, but.
Now, is that based on the twenty-sixth day?
I just did the hourly.
Twenty-sixth pay period year, or is that based on the twenty-seven versus twenty-six?
I think I did it on the twenty-sixth. I don't claim to be a.
Well, the sheet.
To get all the salary details in there.
Two thousand dollars plus.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Plus the burdens.
Mhm.
Dana, the sheet that you provided in the last page, it shows a fourteen thousand dollar increase between the two thousand sixteen salaries and two thousand seventeen salaries.
So that includes that part-time person going to full-time?
Oh, okay.
And then the, and then the wage increase for the two employees, right?
Yes.
But is that a fourteen thousand dollar plus the benefits?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's.
For all three of her requests, yes.
But that's different than what we just did with Linda, because hers were the same as last year's.
Well, on the part-time to full-time is different, but on the money she has in her budget from the employee that left.
Uh huh.
She's trying to divide that between two clerks, and that is the same thing that y'all just approved from Ms. Austin.
And you went from full-time to part-time to see if it would work, correct?
No, the.
By the way, real.
No, the full-time, these two are not affected by the full-time, part-time. They're separate, these are full-time employees.
Right, I got that.
Yeah, the full-time was the one I used for the scanners. And then last year, I so politely agreed to take it to part-time.
Right, but it was full-time.
It was.
And we would just be restoring that position.
That's correct.
Well, I've spent time with Ms. Hogg, and I think that it's needed. I think, I think she needs that full-time position. And it is, it would be restoring. I'm not commending you for trying.
Thanks.
So you had somebody to leave that had been here several years?
It was vacant when I came into office, and I left it vacant so we could afford the scanners. So we did without. We struggled with what we had. And then, once the scanners were bought, then I hired someone part-time.
I think you're asking a question on splitting the money between those two deputies, is that your question?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I understand the part-time.
I'm sorry.
Where are you asking for the money to come from for your increase in salaries?
I had a deputy Lee, deputy Lee that was making fourteen twenty-six. And so I was trying to split the difference so I could stay within the budget.
So you bring a new person in at what?
Thirteen eighteen.
Thirteen sixteen, yeah.
At the bottom, that's a step zero.
I could go for the request.
I, I guess my question is, when you go back to the two thousand sixteen budget, not the budget where we've adjusted. You go back to the two thousand sixteen budget. On salaries. What did then this budget have? We took seven thousand out and we put it back in, right? Or did we take it out?
In the proposed budget that we just passed last week, the seven thousand came out.
It came out.
Just a little while ago, three of you agreed to put it back in.
Put it back in, okay. Now, on this one here. Where I'm seeing here a fourteen thousand dollar difference.
And her, again, her proposed budget does not include the request for the part-time to go full-time, nor does it include the request for the two employees to get a two-step increase.
Okay, but when you compare, not the proposed budget, but the two thousand sixteen budget as we adopted last year. How does this year compare to that?
It's hard to compare it because of that twenty-seven pay period, but it would be, it would be the fourteen thousand dollar increase that we just talked about.
Okay, so we're actually doing a fourteen thousand dollar plus benefits increase over.
But it's gonna decrease because you have twenty-seven payroll, which happens every, what does it say, ten years?
Eleven years.
Yeah, every ten, eleven years.
I'm just trying to figure the, how it's gonna wash out in the. This year's budget as opposed to last year's budget.
I believe it's the increase that we've been talking about, the fourteen thousand plus.
Well, that, I mean, that's what it appears to me.
Yes, sir. Because in her request here, she's got it broken down the way that it would be at twenty-sixth pay period, it looks like to me. And the total for two thousand sixteen was two forty-one, six eighty. For salaries.
Two thirty-three, five fifty cents.
Let me verify that. Well, the adopted budget I have has the twenty-seven pay period in it.
Yeah.
But it looks like to me that it's much higher than the two forty-one, so I believe two forty-one was what the salaries would be with twenty-sixth pay periods.
Okay.
Two forty-one is what it was with twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, yeah, last year with twenty-seven was two forty-one.
According to the last year's propos- last year's budget.
And then when you drop it down, it goes to two thirty-three, five fifty-six, which is eighty-one, twenty-four less. So what's the increase amount? It went down eighty-one, twenty-four with, down to twenty-six from two forty-one, six eighty to two thirty-three, five fifty-six. Do you add that to the fourteen? Um, no, you subtract this from the fourteen.
Six thousand.
No.
Wouldn't you?
No, you would add it.
Would you add it to it?
You'd add it.
I thought you would take it away, because you already said.
That's a surplus.
Yeah, that's what you took out.
That's not a deficit, that's a surplus.
Right.
I think that the twenty-seven pay period has caused a lot of confusion. Especially trying to figure these step increases out. So it's really hard to tell without actually looking at it, what we did for the county clerk as well a while ago, did. Angela, did, did we move her request up more than one step each on her personnel?
And Glenda?
Yes.
Two.
And would it, would it be more than one step each on the district clerk's request?
Yes, you're doing two as well, because she has from zero to two. So she went from a step zero to now requesting a step two.
Well, like I said, whenever I voted for the increase for the county clerk, I would also support the increase request by the district clerk. Only based on the fact that we've done this in the past for other departments that had money already in there and wanted to use that money to give a step. I would like to also, and that I would also only like to see a one-step increase instead of two.
Which part?
Both. That twenty, it's hard to tell because of the twenty-seven pay periods, but that twenty-seven pay period, the two forty-one, six eight is exactly what the.
Proposed budget, I mean, the adopted budget.
What the adopted budget was last year with twenty-seven, so if I'm looking at this correctly, this is gonna be a pretty significant increase in her salary.
Well, if I remember right, when we were doing the budget work, when we had the budget workshop with Ms. Hogg, back before we decided to table it, to now, it was around twenty-eight thousand?
Yeah, I think you're gonna be getting back close there.
On, on salary that I just, I just did it, and Angela, it's, it's thirteen nine forty will be the increase in her budget on salary.
Well, I think where the major increase is your full, your part-time to full-time.
Yes.
I think that's where she's not covered.
Well, because, and that would be in, that would be in that, pulling that full, part-time to full-time would be that thirteen nine.
I don't know if it would make a difference. Of course, we're not voting today like the judge said, we can't, because this is a workshop, but.
But we do need to come to a consensus so we know what to put.
Going back on the vote for the county, I would say I would only agree with a one-step increase for each person in both departments. What about the part-time and full-time? Uh, I would not be for that.
Well, I, I can agree it may, it may be desirable. Maybe necessary, but what I see is if we start adjusting this thing, this thing's gonna fall apart. And I just came in session with a group of IRA taxpayers that do not want a tax increase, in fact, they think we should be cutting. And I just came in session with a group of IRA taxpayers that do not want a tax increase, in fact, they think we should be cutting. And I tried to explain to them, we can't cut because of three or four subdivisions. We have to look at overall. I mean, we, there's no way to give little small cuts, I mean, give cuts to individual groups like that, because we're going overall, but, but there's not a lot of happiness out there. There've been some very significant raises and so I'm gonna be against any increase in taxes. We're gonna be dipping further into the cash reserves, uh, if we let this thing grow. And I think as we move, it's gonna be hard. Now, in Glenda's situation, you're basically going back to zero when you take out the seven, add back in the seven thousand that we had taken out.
Right.
That's not the case here.
Well, but, but we've all done that. My salaries got adjusted last year and every little bit of slack I had for overtime and everything else got taken out, so we have done that. So it's not unprecedented.
We have done that in over the last five or six years. We've taken about four hundred thousand out of road and bridge.
Correct, but it looks like then we're cherry picking instead of being fair. And that would be my, because I hear the conversation.
I don't see it like that, but I mean, you know.
Well, it looks like we're cherry picking, because if I, if I give up ten thousand out of mine because people have retired and moved on and I hire somebody in a lower step, but I still have that money built in to pay for overtime and all that, and then all of a sudden it's taken out. And then my concern is when we ask a department head to try part-time and they earnestly try part-time and it does not meet their need because they're elected too, and they're elected by the citizens to do a job. And if they come back to us and say, okay, I tried the part-time position, it didn't work, I need it to go back to full-time, I think we commend because if not, you're gonna set up for future courts that people don't wanna try part-time. And then, you know, it can become a political nightmare in the sense that, you know, you end up hitting department heads against other department heads, which is not what we're trying to do. And I think, I think if we're gonna be consistent, be consistent. You can't ask commissioners and some other person to pull the slack out of their budget and say, well, it's okay for this person. You're either gonna do it or you're not gonna do it.
I could agree with everything you say, except if you stay within your budget. And the road and bridge budgets have been different because I reiterate, over the last four to five years, we've taken over four hundred, we've taken, I think, closer to seven hundred thousand out of road and bridge to meet the needs of this county.
Right.
So it's a little bit different situation.
And I, I agree with that. Well, I agree with that.
But, and, and, but I agree, every department up here has cooperated and is working hard for the county. But we're right now, we have not, we're not giving county raises. And the judge and Angela group have, have put together what I feel was a pretty good budget. It's a difficult year.
Every year.
But I think if, if we start, if it starts falling apart, it may fall apart more than that.
I think what will help morale is consistency on this court's basis. If you allow for one, then you have to make allowances. Or if you don't, because when you leave the session, you'll have employees in the county clerk's office happy and employees in the district clerk's office unhappy. And it looked like that the court's not being consistent, because that's what I've dealt with six years on the court.
Well, I still go back and I would like for Angela and maybe the judge to be able to tell us next time, are we talking about apples and apples?
Correct.
Because on the county clerk, we had taken seven thousand dollars out. Now, if that had never been taken out, then it would just been a simple matter for the court to give their permission to do this adjustment. The money would have already been there.
And my reasoning is, my department lost last year and it wasn't given back. I'm trying to work a part-time guy in a full-time position, but I don't wanna lose that full-time position, because I may need it.
Did.
You follow what I'm saying? And, and, and I don't know about your department, but my department lost money in salaries last year. And so, my, but my point is, I lost it and then I couldn't come back and ask for it.
Well, we, we've lost it every year for the last four years and we can't come back and ask because we set the tax rate.
And so if we're consistent.
Very simple.
So then if we're consistent, we do nothing for nobody.
We need to know what that increase is gonna be for that part-time person.
Yeah, I, I think we need to know.
Is that something we can get?
Yeah.
Debbie, can you get that far as pretty quick? Thank you. And then, uh, I would just like to come, make a comment based on, uh, what's been, the conversation here. We said, you know, we're, we're doing this because it's been done in the past. Where does it stop? I mean, when somebody retires, do we always take that money and divide it between the employees that are left? That, that, that was the reason that I went against that.
Yeah, and I totally understand.
If, uh, if we could, let's go back and revisit the county clerk's budget because Commissioner Cooper changed his stance on that. That was a, uh, two-step increase that Ms. Austin requested for the three employees and you, you were for that, but now you're saying you're for a one-step. Is that correct?
The, as far as the allowance that Mr. Pell was referring to that was taken out and put back in, it's hard for us to say that because it was based on a twenty-seven pay period and it's not gonna compare to this year's as far as the difference on, uh, the twenty-sixth pay period, so it would look like either a significant decrease or a significant increase, depending on which way you go with it. Uh, like Mr. Kirkendall said, uh, we have done it in the past. The reason why I went for this is we have done it in the past for other departments, including my own department. So I, I think consistency and being fair to allow them to do that is the reason why I went, but I would agree to just a one-step increase per person in both departments. And like you said, we can't vote on that today, but that's just my opinion.
We can't vote on it, but we do need to know how to prepare our changes from the proposed budget to the final budget, so we do have to know where the court's gonna stand on that.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If on letter D, if we determine that we can't give raises this year, then I would recommend no step increases as well. That way, it's fair across the board. It wouldn't be that six employees got a step raise and the other two hundred didn't get a raise.
Right.
That if letter D is no raises, then we don't do any step increases at all.
Letter D is a cost of living percentage increase?
Right.
Okay.
Because I, I mean, I have an employee, I'd like to move from light equipment operator to heavy equipment operator, but I would be willing to not ask for that if we don't do any step increases.
I could agree with that.
So do we wanna tackle D before we convert to A and, A and B?
We can do that if that's what the court would like to do.
Going back on, um, I just, in my, I don't know, might, I have to defer to Angela, but going back on the two thousand, you know, sixteen where we had the twenty-seven pay periods and doing the D back down to, uh, the regular pay schedule, there's a fourteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollar difference in Glenda's salaries. It wasn't just a seven thousand, it was fourteen, one thirty-one, so.
Same difference on both things.
Yeah, the seven, the seven thousand would be in that one salary, right? Is that what you're talking about, that one, one person's salary that's not here anymore? Is that where it's coming from?
The seven thousand, the way we, um, arrived at that was she said approximately an hour, a dollar an hour increase and there was three employees times twenty, two thousand eighty hours, that's twenty-six pay periods and eighty hours per pay period. And so then plus, um, benefits, it came roughly with seven thousand dollars. That's how that was determined.
Okay. Is that the difference between the person who left and, and her budget?
That's what she proposed, yes. Mm-hmm. That's what she proposed.
Well, along the lines that Chris just said, and I kinda thought that was our agreement on this
Right.
budget that we looked at last Friday was, that we had two situations that we're gonna deal, that we were dealing with. One was, the labor laws in the United States of America mandated that we make some changes to keep people exempt. So we had no choice but to do that. And then we've got an obligation in the sheriff's department for certificate pay. That's an agreement we made with them many years ago that we would honor that. And aside from that, we weren't gonna do anything. That was gonna be the budget.
But we do have these items here that, that had been requested in the past that we told them we'd come back and revisit.
Okay.
We just couldn't visit it before we adopted the proposed budget. I mean, I guess we could have, because we received these figures from the appraisal district earlier than we thought we would, but we couldn't count on that. So that's why we set them up for today.
Yeah.
With the, uh, fourth off, that if we add that in, we just have to add it in between now and the final budget, if we add those back in, those requests.
That, that can be done up until the day of the public budget here.
Yes, sir.
I would suggest we leave this budget just like it is right now, because I think if we start doing a lot of adjusting, this thing's gonna fall apart. It's not a perfect budget. But we write, we haven't seen yet what the amount coming from the appraisal district is gonna be on the ARB board and stuff that, you know, is gonna come back.
On protest, protested bands?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we don't know for sure what that is. We do know right now that where it sits, we're looking at what, a seventy-four thousand dollar deficit out of cash surplus.
Seventy-seven, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Now, if this other comes back and we can maybe do some adjusting without that growing, but if it starts growing, then we've already taken nine hundred thousand out for the annex.
I would be for leaving it as is and, uh, not considering any more step raises, just to be consistent.
Especially in light that we're not doing any cost of living raise this year. And I felt that was, uh, acceptable for this year, being the first year in eighteen years that we have not given any type of raise across the board to our employees was because insurance costs did not go up. If insurance costs had gone up, then I feel we'd have been obligated to do something if it wasn't for one percent.
Debbie hadn't made it back yet. Are we gonna, are we gonna continue to discuss the district clerk's budget when she comes back with the amount of the, uh, part-time to full-time? Or what's the consensus of the court on that?
I would be for leaving the proposed budget as is to be consistent until we for sure know letter D.
Yeah.
If, if, if the consensus is no, uh, COLA, then what we have in the proposed would be what I would recommend.
Uh, the, uh, proposed budget, I just wanna remind you, does have a couple of step increases there for road and bridge one and JP two.
Well, and I think we're bringing her back up to the salary she was at.
Yes, sir.
Whenever, um, she left one department and I would be for that.
Yeah, I'm for that.
So do we, are we wanting to skip C and go to D and then come back to C or what, what do y'all wanna do?
I would like to, uh, it doesn't matter, Judge. I'm, I'm open for either.
Sounds like that's what we need to do.
Got that, showed you.
All right, so let's go to item D, salaries, all departments and retirees. We had the retirees in here, most, a lot of them showed up and we appreciate that. Uh, they are requesting a cost of living increase, a COLA. And, uh, I think Debbie prepared that for us and I don't have it with me, but we had it last week and Angela, do you remember the amount of a one percent COLA? Was it
I didn't bring it.
two hundred and sixty-something thousand dollars, I believe, is what that would cost us? Or two hundred and eighty-three thousand maybe? Anyway, over two, over quarter million dollars.
That's on retirees.
Retirees only, yes, sir. And we have not figured what any increase would cost on, uh, across the board percentages, but last year two percent cost us, uh, I believe, three hundred and eight thousand.
Well, on either one of them, you're either gonna take it out of surplus, which we've already hit pretty hard, or you're gonna raise taxes.
Right. And I've already stated, but I'll state again that I'm against doing either.
I'm against doing either because I think that, uh, we're drawing that surplus down.
At least not.
I think we're gonna need it next year. And I'm not for doing anything that's gonna add to that unfunded liability that we have with the county and district requirement. And we know that even though we've increased our, uh, factor that we're paying on, due to market losses and stuff, we actually lost ground.
We gotta get that healthy.
And where this country is right now, I don't know how many of you follow the economic situation though, but.
It's grim.
There was one man the other day that made two point four billion dollars. And the article I read said it's gonna come directly from pension funds. We've got a system now that is not good, but it's a system in place. And I'm not for doing anything that's gonna add to our unfunded liability.
So I would concur with the chair and Commissioner Pell.
I'll concur.
Mr. Cooper, you have any comments?
On what?
Item D.
Oh, I got several, sir.
Okay.
Uh, I think we're shooting a shotgun here instead of a rifle. We jumping around from one thing to another. If we're not gonna give raises, then I'm against, uh, rearranging them seven department heads you rearranged.
Okay.
Uh, and I'm, I'm in agreements with, uh, Commissioner Kirkendall, Commissioner Pell and yourself on, uh, cross-the-board raises. And the reason I am, I'm usually for, uh, our employees getting cost of living raised, but the reason I am is because the amount we took out last year out of our contingency to do the twenty-seven pay periods. And that was a pretty significant amount. Uh, we could've reduced it back to where we divided, uh, the amount they get by twenty-six or twenty-seven, whatever it was and, and it would show that they get less and we wouldn't have had to go in contingency, but we did for the employees, so I'm satisfied with that. And that's the reason why I would say, uh, no cross-the-board raise.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts?
Um, I know everybody needs, needs extra money and it's just like, you know, everyday, everyday thing, but I also realize our budget and where it is. Um, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Cooper about the cross-the-board raises. Uh, it's, it's hard to justify one when you can't give someone else a raise. And that would, that would involve everybody, uh, the whole county, including the retirees. Um, until we get, until we get it leveled out and back on, on the right way. I just don't see that happening.
All right, so on item D, it sounds like the consensus is no across-the-board raise for all departments and no, uh, COLA increase for, uh, retirees. And that seems to be unanimous.
Yes, it is.
So do we need to go back now and revisit item A? The county clerk's request for three step increases?
Based on, uh, no adjustments for letter D, I would make the recommendation no adjustments on letter A.
Mr. Cooper?
And that way, and here's why, it's consistent and then we're not cherry picking who's getting raises and who's not. Because I know that's the one thing that people would ask that say, well, five people in the budget got a raise and the others didn't. And so for consistency, if we're not giving a raise, we don't give a raise with the allowance of allowing the clerk to keep her salary she had when she moved from that department.
With that in mind, uh, Commissioner Kirkendall, are you going for the seven adjustments the judge made for the department heads?
I could look at that if we kept a matrix on overtime to see where we would end up. And if it would, if, if we would end up going over budget with the overtime, then we make those adjustments in the, as the budget goes on.
Well, if we're not gonna do that and we're not gonna give anybody, then I would say no on this too.
Yeah, and so I would say that.
But if we are.
I'd say leave them as they are, what you're saying, including the seven, but we'll have to have a matrix to see if the overtime's gonna take them over forty-seven, isn't it forty-seven?
So you're saying those seven employees would not be exempt employees anymore, they go to hourly?
And then what we'd have to do is just keep a matrix to see if it's gonna cost us more money, then at that point make a, an amendment in the budget. I don't know if that's something that, I don't know if it's wise to do that.
Can, can you take a department head out of exempt status?
I don't think you can.
I, I don't think you should. I don't know if you can or not.
I don't think you can. I think department heads have to be exempt.
I think they have.
So we're stuck.
I think by labor law, they have to be exempt and the law has changed and forced us into this. I don't think we have a big choice.
Yeah, we're not gonna have a choice on, on that raise, yeah.
I think you comply with the law and you comply with the agreement we have with the sheriff's department on certificate pay. Those two things are obligations we've made and other than that, you don't do anything.
I will defer to that.
Well, with that being said, then because we have done this in the past, I would go for the increase requested by both clerks. Uh, a one-step. Using, using money she had in her budget to give a one-step increase for those personnel.
I would, uh, I would say no based on the Department of Labor ruling. That would be my reason for the department heads. And then to keep all other hourly people at the same.
Same, I would go with that.
I'm with Commissioner Cooper on the, um, the one percent, I mean, the one-step raise for the clerks. But also, um, I'm, I'm interested in, I know, I know she, uh, the, the, uh, part-time to full-time. Um, it, you know, I'm, I'm going back on what Chris said. She, she in good faith did this last year to see if it would work, and apparently, if it's not working in her department, she would know how that's working, and if she needs it to go the other way, she'd go. And I think, I think we need to look at that. That, that's not necessarily a raise, that's a, that's a needed position.
Uh, based on what I'm hearing, on item A, for the county clerk's request for three personnel to receive a step increase, it sounds like the consensus is against that. Am I wrong, or am I correct on that?
I think you're correct.
Okay. On item B, on the district clerk's request for step increases, it sounds like the consensus of the court is against that. And it sounds like the, uh, request to make the person part-time go full-time is a split, and I'll break the tie with being for that. So we'll increase that part-time person to full-time.
I think Debbie's back, um, if you will.
What's that amount gonna be, Debbie?
Okay, um, last year was budgeted, um, for her part-time fifteen-two-seventy-six, which, uh, that's twenty-seven weeks, so it's fourteen-seven-ten. A full-time employee making thirteen-sixteen an hour is twenty-seven, twenty-seven thousand three-seventy-two. The difference is twelve thousand six-sixty-two.
How, how much, Debbie?
Twelve thousand six-sixty-two. That's just the salary, that's not counting the fringes.
And that's the difference between twenty-seven and fourteen?
The twenty-seven and the fourteen-seven-ten.
It's twenty, is twelve-six-sixty-two just for the salary?
Six-sixty-two just for the salary.
And then you, you'll have to increase the health insurance.
Right.
She'll be eligible for health insurance.
The insurance, yeah, they would be able, they'd be able to get insurance.
But you'll have all the benefits, won't you, the vacation, everything, so you probably talk about somewhere around eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars.
All right, so I believe we're done with item A and item B, unless anyone has anything further on those two items. Let's move on to item C, the sheriff's office. Morning sheriff, how are you? And Chief Davis is here as well, the Republican nominee for sheriff. Good morning, chief. I would like to repeat what I said on Thursday when we had a, uh, when, when we adopted the proposed budget, because the sheriff wasn't here. I know there were a couple of deputies here. But, uh, let me repeat what I said on Thursday regarding that, and then I'd let you, uh, present what you have for us. Uh, first of all, the sheriff had, uh, submitted a proposed budget that included around twenty-five thousand dollars in decreases. Uh, then he met with, uh, Commissioner Cooper and I, along with Chief Davis, and we discussed his budget, and he, uh, submitted a revised proposed budget that includes around eighty-six thousand dollars in decreases, and now that's just in operations. Uh, one change that I made from the sheriff's proposed budget to the proposed budget that we adopted on Thursday was in cell phone allowances. I believe the sheriff had included, uh, thirty-six hundred dollars in cell phone allowances, and I changed it to twenty-four hundred dollars for cell phone allowances, and then the sheriff can decide how to split those up between, uh, departments. Then, uh, as far as salaries go, we included the, uh, certificate and step increases that the sheriff included in his proposed budget, because as Commissioner Pell said, those are automatic, and that's something that was agreed to back in two thousand and one, as I remember. So the only request that I can think of, unless the sheriff corrects me, is he has a request to make some other salary, uh, adjustments, and I'd like for the sheriff to come up and present those to us and discuss those.
I guess I'm kinda confused. What do you want me to?
Well, on the, uh, don't you still have some other salary increases that you requested? Just for instance, the one, the one thing I can think about is the, uh, or, uh, that comes to mind, is you have a lieutenant, captain, ma- and major position. They're going from, uh, well, this top grade grade that's in here didn't used to be there, so that's gonna be an increase.
Correct. Um, when we lost Major Cook, uh, we, because of the grade step and the way that it falls, we, we didn't have to worry about that, cause Major Cook had more time than anybody in the sheriff's office at that time. But when he left, and you're talking about moving, and Chief Davis and I, uh, talked about the adjustments he would like to make in the, in the future. When we move some lower people up to, uh, lieutenant, captain positions, their salaries would be lower than, than some of the regular sergeants and deputy, or high, high-end deputies, if we did not change the base pay. So what we decided to do was add, uh, in the, uh, to the lieutenant and captain position, the top grade, which would be, uh, if you're looking at that, I'm assuming you are.
Yes, sir.
LE nine, the top grade pay, plus the monthly adjustment for those, the lieutenant and captain and major position. Which would bring their salaries up above your high sergeant, high deputy level. And so, we've had the chief deputy at top grade plus a monthly allowance, and we just moved the lieutenant, captain, major position to the same thing. Top grade pay plus, so that when you move, um, Dela Serta to a lieutenant and Aaron Tupper to a captain's position, their, their salaries would be higher than, a little higher than your top-grade sergeant, and also your top-grade deputies. So that changed the, that changed the salary there for those two people.
Now, the levels are based on years of service, correct?
Correct.
So how's that gonna go over with other employees if, if they don't have sixteen-plus years and were justifying top grade?
Same thing they did with the chief deputy, twenty years ago, with Chief Davenport. He didn't have any service either. That was the only way you could get this grade step to work. Otherwise, you got a captain making less than a top deputy. There's no other way to do that. So you're asking them to supervise people that make more than them?
Well, and I ran into that same scenario when I hired a foreman, who was here less than, the employees had been here twenty years, but I ran into that same scenario where it was that same thing. What I'm, what I'm more concerned with is just the overall morale, cause that's, if people are gonna jam me up, that's where they're jamming me up, is, well, I've been, you know, that, I've been here twenty years, that person's been here eight years, and so that's the conflict I'm dealing with outside of the hearings, is, we don't think that's fair, and sometimes it's pretty overwhelming.
I'm asking you to do more.
Right.
Judge, I have a question here.
Mr.?
In the budget that we approved.
Yes, sir.
To be filed, what is the overall effect of the sheriff's department, the jail, and whatever, you lump these three together, narcotics, whatever, is it increase or decrease?
There again, it's hard to.
Not counting the salaries, uh,
Yeah, that twenty-seven.
You got seventy-six thousand in sheriff's office operation decrease and twelve thousand in jail, if I'm looking at it correctly. Does that sound right, Sheriff?
Well, that's, I mean, I told him that Thursday it shows it in.
That's just operations, not salaries.
Okay, well.
Everything below the supplemental deadline item in the proposed budget, those are the.
Okay, when you, when you look at the salaries, then how does that, does that wipe this out?
I don't think so, no, Sheriff. Again, with that twenty-seven to twenty-six, it's hard to compare it without going back and refiguring what it would've been on twenty-six pay periods, and I haven't done that.
Okay, well, between now and the public hearing, can we do that?
Sure. I can do it between now and our next regular meeting.
If, if there is a overall decrease in that budget, then I'm not as concerned about what the inner workings are. Just I'm not on any department, if they can fund what they've got. My suggestion would be we leave the budget like it is and try to get these figures, so that we know exactly where we are before the public hearing. And we'll also know what the effects of the, surely it's supposed to give us the effects of what the income loss is gonna be, and what the state's gonna take away from us in fees. And then we'll also know what's gonna happen on the appraisal that's being contested, so we'll know what our financial situation is and what effect it's gonna have on cash reserves, far better when we get ready for the public hearing than we know today. I mean, that's just a suggestion.
And I would move, if we're gonna do that, can we have just a budget workshop with the sheriff, like on the fourth or fifth? Would that work for you, versus the eighth? Do it toward the end of the week, if we can get those figures and just.
I would, I would.
I don't know, Angela, how soon could we get, compare twen- other two thousand sixteen to, with twenty-six pay periods to what's being proposed in twenty seventeen?
If it's okay, I'd like to do it on the eighth.
Are you here on eight?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Next Monday, are you in town on eight?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, are you available on eight, is what I should say?
That's the regular court meeting.
That's right.
Well, can we do the workshop with the sheriff at nine?
Why, why do we need to have a workshop with the sheriff?
Well, cause we're talking about his budget, and I'd prefer to do it.
It's already in the proposed budget, just like this, isn't it? Are you requesting anything in, in addition to what we put in the proposed budget?
The proposed budget is not what's in here.
Okay.
Yeah.
You've got, uh,
I thought it was.
You've got two increases and a de- decrease in here that we did not make when we figured the proposed budget, because we had not had this workshop today.
Is that the only thing?
It's the only thing I see right offhand, and then, and then these other three, uh, well, that, that includes these three.
But by Monday, we would know the overall effects.
We could, yes, sir.
Then I'd like to meet with him early, before the budget, before the regular court session, to see what actually the bottom line changes to the proposed budget would be.
Which, which three did you say are not in the proposed budget, Judge?
It's the increase for the, uh, captain going from fifty-three thousand four forty-six to sixty-one thousand six forty-eight. And then the proposed change for lieutenant going from fifty-three thousand four forty-six to fifty-nine eight forty-eight. And then the current captain going to sergeant, which would be a decrease of sixty-one thousand nine forty-eight down to fifty-nine eight forty-eight. And I believe that's all, that's all the changes, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Other than, that was not, uh, certificate or longevity pay?
Yes, sir, but I, I, I need to look at the, what y'all's proposed, the bottom line looks totally different than what I've got here, so I'm just curious to what else changed.
Okay. I'm sorry, there is one more. There's an increase on the, but that shouldn't change, cause you had, uh, you had pers- a person as patrol sergeant, you're just moving that person. So there's an increase there on that line item, but you already had a patrol sergeant, so that should not be an increase in the whole budget, right?
No, shouldn't be there, no.
I'm looking at, uh, dispatcher, there's no increase there, right? Or is there?
There's no, there's no increase on dispatch, no. Now, as I see on the proposed budget, you, you show a decrease in the elected official?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I did, uh, discuss that on Thursday. I forgot to mention it a while ago, but yes, sir. From ninety, around ninety-three something down to eighty-four, ninety-five.
And it's prorated in the proposed budget from January to September, and that's why it's that amount.
Well, I, actually, that's, uh, elected officials, the elect fight here, but I, I could, have to say I disagree with that. Sheriff, uh, you know, when I ran for sheriff, I ran knowing what the salary was gonna be, and, uh, he did the same thing. I don't think anybody, any other elected official in this county has taken a cut from what they were elected at. I don't think that's a good idea to start that now, so.
Well, it is something that we discussed earlier this year, uh, not in open court, but I discussed it with Commissioner Cooper and I, and, uh, it is something that we talked about looking at to see, and comparing all of them, and we did. We compared the, uh, incoming, uh, we only have two positions changing, the sheriff and the incoming, uh, tax assessor collector, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, our tax collector makes around sixty-nine or sixty-eight, and we would compare that to other counties, it's, it's within a thousand dollars. When you compare the sheriff's salaries, that's around the seventy-eight thousand dollar. If you compare the, uh, population and the same budget size with what other counties, our size and the same budget have, it's around seventy-eight. And, uh, with input from Commissioner Cooper and Commissioner Pell, we, we made it to be the same as mine, eighty-four oh ninety-five. And had we discovered that the tax collector was, uh, off, we would've adjusted that as well.
Well, I'm just.
But that's the reason for it.
Man runs for position, or a person runs for a position, and they say, see what the salary is, he might, you know, that might've had a bearing on whether or not he ran or not, so.
Yes, sir. I understand.
Just for what it's worth, I don't, I don't agree with that. Uh, I would also like to look at, uh, of course, we're gonna have time to do that before a workshop, nine o'clock, eight, on the eighth, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, sir, and why don't we, uh, what about if you and I and Angela sit down and go over and make sure if there's, if we made any mistakes, let's fix them?
Yeah.
And then, uh.
Cause the numbers look a little different, and I'd like some time to, to look at that.
Sure. But I believe that what we did, as far as, uh, we made the change in the elected official salary, and then, other than that, the increases that you requested for certificate and longevity pay are in the proposed budget. The rest of the changes that were proposed, we did not make those until we could sit down today and discuss them, and then we'll discuss them again on the eighth, at nine o'clock.
Okay, and I also see in the operating budget, some number, or at least one number that's higher than mine, so I'm just curious.
Well, we might've made a mistake.
Looks like you added, which I appreciate, but didn't need it there.
Which line item is it?
Excuse me, I'm looking at it on my phone. I don't have a copy of it yet. It looks like you, you may have broke some things out, so, such as software support, you added that?
Yes, sir.
That may be where there's.
The rentals line item is changed now, so that, instead of all that coming out of that line item, we divided it up. So there's a software support, there's also, uh,
office machine now.
Yeah, added office machine now.
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
So I, I see what you've done. You broke out some of the, I'd just like the opportunity to go over all those and make sure they're correct.
Yes, sir.
Before we, and we can talk about that on the night, if there is any differences on the night.
And I believe we did make an increase, because there was, uh, once we added everything up, it was about a twelve hundred dollar, there was about twelve hundred dollars short in the rentals and maintenance line item that we increased among of the five line items that we broke out. Does that sound right? Actually, Candace and I, I think worked on that, so.
And I see a, uh, a line item created, subscriptions, investigative, is that one of the things you broke out?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That is for the, uh, clear and the, uh, oxygen software.
Okay.
And there was, it seemed like there was one other one there, too. We added a line item of the training for T-LEDs to come out of there, six hundred eighty dollars, if I remember right.
Okay.
Judge, can I verify, in the, uh, proposed budget, you said the, uh, step, the, I'm sorry, the, uh, certificate increases and step increases were included?
Yes, sir.
Or, I thought this court agreed, we're not doing step increases for anybody across the board.
That's something y'all discussed today.
Y'all?
That's something that you brought up this morning.
What?
The step increases.
No, I thought a while ago, we agreed not to give this, uh, the two clerks a step increase, but we're giving the sheriff's department a step increases.
It's in the proposed budget, yes, sir.
So you're, y'all for that?
That is something that this court's done since two thousand and one.
I thought Ms. Pell said just.
Certificates.
Certificates.
Certificate pay.
It has to do with this LE, this pay scale, LE one through LE nine.
Right.
That is something.
So we're gonna allow the sheriff's department to have a step increase, but not the clerks?
Well, that's up to everybody on the court.
But to verify, the step increases were included in the proposed budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanna make sure the record indicates that.
And if we go back and revisit it, then is that something we can caveat out? We're looking at everything broke out, what we're losing on fees and what have you, and is that something we wanna look at, or we just wanna go with proposed?
That's something we can discuss.
But I do think consistency is important. Especially for all. Especially for all future budgets.
I agree with that.
Well, I'm for, I benefited from it, I worked at the sheriff's office, I'm for step increases. But if we're gonna do it for one department, we're gonna do it for all.
But I disagree with taking money that's left over from a retiree and dividing it amongst other employees, and that's what we're at, that's what's being asked to be done here, I'm against that.
I did it.
But if you have somebody that.
Probably did.
Well, I'm just one, I'm just one vote.
Well, I was, I was just wanting to make that for the record, I don't have anything else.
And I do think that we're all on the same page this year in the sense that we wanna see consistency and fairness across the board. So that employees, employees understand that we're we're rooting for everybody.
So, what I believe is gonna happen is uh Angela and I will get together, we will come up with exactly what the difference is, and then maybe the three of us can sit down Tuesday or Wednesday. Does that sound good? Uh, in the afternoon, I'll get with you and we'll set up a definite time for that, and be ready to come back here on eight to present it to the court.
Okay. Okay, and Judge, along the lines that uh, Mr. Cooper's talking about. Can y'all, and you say that the, there's some step increases in the sheriff's budget, can they?
Yes, sir, it goes on this pay scale, it's on.
That's kinda complicated to grasp just right off the bat.
Yes, sir.
Can we have a figure on what the step increases are?
Sure.
Certificate pay is automatic, we made an agreement there. I'd just like to see what the step increases are.
So this pay scale is automatic too, that was all adopted at the same time.
Anything that's an obligation that this court has agreed to, we need to hold to it.
And I did.
So we, so, okay. And was the steps increased?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because we made an agreement with the sheriff's department back, and we had a reason for doing it. And so I think we ought to stay with what we have agreed to. And then Monday, we can look at and see where we are with what we've agreed to and uh, where we are.
Okay, we'll have the figures all broken down, so we can see exactly, try to see a little better than we do now. Thank you, Sheriff. Move on to item E, request from any other department, I'm not aware of any, but if anybody has a request that they'd like to make now.
Well, mine was gonna be to move one from light equipment to heavy equipment, but I I rescind that.
To uh, understand everything correctly. We agree not to do any action on A and B?
Correct, except move them.
No, no across the boards on D, does that include my uh request?
That's not the way I understand it. On item A, we have a request to give three employees a step increase, two two steps. Your recommendation was to go one step, I was against either. Do we wanna just revisit that and let's make sure where we all are?
I thought we had no step.
I thought we did too, I believe the consensus was no step.
I thought we were, I thought we were agreeing with no step.
No step, and then.
And then on item B, for the district clerk, it was the same, no step increases, but I agreed, and so did Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Pelt to add the, I'm sorry, Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Kirkandall. To add the part time person back in from part time to full time.
Okay.
Sheriff's office, we're tabling, we'll come back to that on August eighth at nine AM. On item D, uh, no increases across the board for any departments, including retirees.
Does that include my request that was put in the proposed budget?
Well.
Or do I need to withdraw that?
We need to, we need to figure out, I guess, where that is, I think everybody agrees the request that JP two, Judge Brewer made, is gonna stay in the proposed budget like it is. Um, I'd like to make a comment regarding one of the step increases you made that was for your secretary. He's handling the airport duties now, which is something that uh Amanda used to handle whenever she was a clerk, and now now that she is the uh department head, we move that out, that uh. Responsibility over to uh Jeffrey, and I think he's done an outstanding job on that, and you've requested a one step pay increase for him. That is the same thing that your secretary makes, I do believe, who who's brand new, and he's been here for four years. I honestly think that's too low of an increase for him, but uh, that's your decision on that. You you were, you made two other requests too, and I don't have the details on that with me, but if you'd like to talk about it.
It was one step, it was just a one step increase, but what I'm saying is, if we're not gonna do anything, like, I think we agreed, then I have to withdraw that. Uh, proposal, and it's in, it's in the proposed budget.
Right. But it's a little different, because you're not taking money from somebody who left and trying to distribute it among people, you're trying to give some merit increases.
And you've changed duties.
And with with Jeffrey in particular, just for instance, I don't know the amount, but it was a large amount that that y'all increased the floodplain budget for Amanda to take on that duty, and this one step increases.
Well, we give, we give them a stipend.
Right.
Not not my clerk, but the lady before you and you.
Right.
And I just asked for a one step increase on the uh, on my secretary because of the uh increase of duties, but. Uh, I guess we can revisit that on the eighth?
I'll put it on here for the eighth, yes, sir. Alright, so are there any other requests from any departments? Anybody in the audience have any comments they'd like to make? I'd like to open the floor to anybody that's here in the audience. Most of the adjourned?
Second.
And most of by Commissioner Kirkandall, and the second by Commissioner Pelt, so adjourn, we're adjourned.